Phil and Roland.
Spring.
Southern Shore.
Good times.
My ten year old says, well, I want to go with Big Brother. And spray foam like, oh buddy.
Is it?
I can't come and get you.
Oh, man.
That bad?
Yep.
Still doing um. Uh. Baseball camp next week at report at Gibson's.
I'm not sure. That's a mom thing.
Yeah.
I hope so.
All our lives.
We're ready. Okay. Okay, we'll call the order. The Planning and Zoning Commission on Thursday, June twenty six, twenty twenty five. Um, notice hereby given that the Port Aransas Planning and Zoning Commission will conduct a meeting on Thursday, June twenty six, twenty twenty five, beginning at three P M. The regular meeting place in City Council Chamber and City Hall. Am I supposed to read this?
Maybe I'll just skip to the comments.
Since the comments from reports, at this time, comments will be taken from the audience. On any subject matter, please limit comments to three minutes. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the Planning and Zoning Commission may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. Three items for consideration. Three point one, discuss and take action on improving the minutes from May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, planning and zoning regular meeting.
Did everybody have a chance to read over everything? I know it's kind of a longer one because it was our Southern Shore meeting.
Yes.
Uh, Tess actually wrote them out verbatim, so that was forty five pages of writing. We condensed that to what you see there.
Okay.
It's good to have in the future. Um, because a lot of times we'll go back and hey, what did we say about this? Or didn't we say this at the beginning or that? And sometimes it's easier to go through and read that.
For sure. Um, so no questions over the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Second. Of the motion and a second?
What I could see was that Steven motioned and Phil second?
Yes.
Okay, Felicia Buster?
Yes.
Bill Straber?
Yes.
Steven Lawson?
Yes.
Mike Van?
Yes.
Lushin Harris.
Okay, and we were skipping three point two.
The applicant requested that be changed. Uh, though that will come to you guys next month. With full approval, hopefully from the G L O as well.
Oh.
We're gonna go ahead and send it to them ahead of you guys, just to say.
That'll be good.
Nice.
Um, item three point three, discuss and take possible action on recommended revisions to the City of Port Aransas Code of Ordinances, Chapter nineteen, signs.
Okay, so um. We've got five of our members from our sign committee.
Awesome.
Uh, which is lovely to have them here. It's helpful to have outside influence as well. Um, so my apologies for the break that we had to take in between when we started this and when we did it now, but I thought it was best to just put it together for you guys and let's talk about it as a full ordinance. So what you see here is what I have written based on the conversations that we had at that prior meeting. It doesn't change a whole lot about what was allowed um for signs previously, but it does make what we were allowing and how we were doing things a little bit more constitutional. Hopefully fully constitutional. After you guys approve this, it will go to our city attorney for uh, review to make sure that he feels the same way I do about it, and then it'll go to council, hopefully in July is when they're expecting it.
Awesome.
So, um. It's my suggestion that we just kind of go through it and
Each by each.
An open forum um for everybody, so that if you guys want to jump in and say something, or if we want to have some discussion, uh, you guys all down here too. If you guys want to jump in and say something, let's do it.
Well, I'm gonna go in order. We just want to bring out issues that maybe you got questions.
Um, I think maybe it's probably best if we just start at the beginning and go through it. I feel like it's more comprehensive that way. I'll kind of go through um how I wrote it, and then you guys stop me whenever you've got questions or issues. Um, I will apologize ahead of time that I wrote this in different, on different days, and so some days I used A's and B's, and some days I used ones. Some days I used green highlighter, blue highlighter.
I think some stuff that I thought there was a not extensive on teams like those have been forward.
What I did was I just put it in and then left it up for discussion now and at council. So we definitely, if there's a contentious issue that you find here, let's discuss it fully, and then uh, council will do the same.
Yes.
Okay, so that first preamble is one that we had discussed at a previous meeting and everybody kind of agreed to. The definitions I took out for now to shorten this um, this page or this portion that that will be added in, but I figured definitions probably aren't too controversial. Uh, section nineteen two, nineteen three, didn't really change much. I did change.
And I'm sorry, but on the definition, so this whole thing refers to temporary signs and that's not defined. So I'm not really sure what we're.
So I didn't change it based on um the definitions that are in the current ordinance probably won't change at all. So they're defined in the current ordinance. If you want, I can grab.
Looking at this document and I didn't know to go.
Sorry.
So I'm reading this and I'm like, okay, that might be fine, but what the hell is a temporary sign?
Yeah. Make sure that we answer all your questions about that today, but it is defined and it's probably gonna remain almost exactly the same. Yeah. Um, so two and three didn't really change, except for I changed the wording a little bit to make things a little um, more easily readable. Section nineteen dash four, I did take out some of the things that were problematic um constitutionally. But in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't really change what a permit is not required for.
So the permit is still not required for the same things that it was before?
Um, with the exception of some of our temporary signs, and we'll get into that in different sections where that's laid out a little bit more clearly. Um. I don't think that there's anything really in here that is divisive or controversial, or correct me if I'm wrong. Anybody have a problem with any of that? Right? Um, five, six, and seven. Eight, nine, and ten, and eleven, those really didn't change at all. Uh, nineteen twelve mostly did not change at all. Basically, the same things that you were allowed to do before uh, without permits and that weren't towards your sound alliance, sa- sign allowance are still the same way. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, basically the same. I changed the wording to make it a little not so legalese. It's more uh, plain folk language. So nineteen dash eighteen, this is kind of the section that it um starts being different looking. So before it was tables, and it was very difficult both for staff to go in and look at the different tables and to see what the allowances were. And it was really very difficult for property owners or business owners to determine what kind of sign they were eligible for. So I thought it would be better if we wrote it in a paragraph style um, rather than the table. Still allows almost all the same things we allowed before. It's just written in a way that's much clearer. You can go to the residential uh, area sign regulations if you're a resident. And you can know, you can see what you've got there.
Do you have a comparison between what it was and what you've changed?
I do not. I mean, besides the ordinances, I can pull them up online.
This, I mean, it'd be helpful to know, like, I know some of the wording was just changed, but um, sometimes just the simple wording can change the trajectory of the intent. And so it'd be good to kind of know where that was um.
Do you have one of the specific portions that we've already passed?
No, because I don't know what to change. So. So, um, I think maybe just start with one that you just talked about, because you said
Your residential?
Yeah, you changed some of it, but.
What I'm gonna do is just pull this up here. This is the chart that it was, and how they had it was they had a whole chart for temporary signs in every district and every use you could imagine for temporary signs.
Okay, so that was nineteen
Fifty one.
Fifty one. So that corresponds to your nineteen eighteen.
Correct. Well, the lots of portions are part of. This chart is in several different sections in this document. Because of the kind of ambiguity that it had in in nineteen fifty one, it had residential mixed in with commercial temporary signs, and then the same thing for regular signs, and then the same thing for different exempt signs.
Can you share the definition of a temporary sign? That is just woven throughout this whole document, and it didn't, I didn't take the time to go on the city website to see the definitions. I was just looking at the document that you provided. And there's a lot of questions I have depending on what that means.
Yep. Any sign intended to serve for a limited period of time?
That's the whole definition.
That is the whole definition.
That's like a real estate sign, a political sign, a sale today sign.
Anything that is not
That crawl here.
Yep.
Yeah, anything that is not permitted and intended to remain there forever.
The Dallas.
I didn't know it was like, it's faulty for this, you know, this type of that type.
No, and see, that's kind of the constitutionality. You can't say just real estate signs are temporary and then.
Hey, Jenna, I'm I'm the new document here on uh, nineteen eighteen C one says signs must be removed within ten calendar days after the qualifying event ends, so.
Sting of a house or
It's listed there, so it definitely.
That the crawl was over last Sunday. Why do you still have that sign?
Yep.
Or like the political sign was still on the corner of G and Station Street.
Yeah, they should be gone.
Yep.
But they're still in office, so. They're still in office.
They called. So the you verify here where it says like the sign should be removed, and it says you have to get a permit for a temporary sign. Is that, is that just for the multifamily signs, or is that for both? It's a little confused.
So it's it's intentional, it's only for the section that it's written in.
Okay, so it doesn't reply to the single family residential.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. So temporary signs, let's start with uh, nineteen eighteen B, temporary signs on single family residential lots. This section was written in a way that we had discussed at our sign committee meetings. So before um, you could, it was labeled in that chart that a single family residence could have a residential sign of three square feet. We can't say you can have a residential real estate sign that's three square feet. We can say you can have a temporary sign that's three square feet, and then anybody can write anything on it. We also wanted to allow the I've got a kindergarten student at P I S D, or I've got a basketball player, the signs that parents put in yards. And then the code also allowed for um, smaller uh, security signs. This property is monitored by A D T, or you know, whatever those were. We are not constitutionally allowed to say you can have this type of sign if it has this message on it. We can only say you can have this number of signs, or you can have this size of signs. And so what we had discussed at the prior committee meetings was letting all the residential places have up to three temporary signs. Which seems good until you have every residence that has three temporary signs. So the discussion that I'm hoping to have today is, do we want to put in a requirement for at least one of those signs that it be only in a qualifying event, only if your house is listed for sale? Or do we want to just leave it like?
If you have five children and they're all in the band.
Yep. So my other
This, which is my favorite.
It'd be very busy, yeah.
I live.
I know.
So that is this, this little category here, it's kind of been on my mind for the last few weeks, and I think a better solution would be to write in the allowance for everybody can have one temporary sign regardless. Everybody can have a second temporary sign if there's a qualifying event. A sale, you know, a lease, something for rent, something for lease. We have written in an exemption for school signs in a different place in the ordinance, which we are legally allowed to do. And I think we can make a reach that any of those signs are
Yeah.
Are school signs.
Yeah. Have you ever had somebody complain about a student, like a student involvement sign?
Only on commercial lots, not on residential lots. But again, we can't tell them.
People on a commercial lot.
Um.
Or is it like that home game tonight? Oh, and then they don't take it back up or?
Yeah, right. Or how come they're allowed to have that home game tonight sign, and I can't have my mosquito hunter sign?
Okay.
You know, and so we don't really want to talk to the message that's on the sign, but we want to say that home game tonight sign is a school sign. School signs are exempt and allowed to be there.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's a good workaround.
So I guess the question is, do we want to leave it written as it is in here right now that allows the three signs? It prevents them from being commercial message signs, which we can legally do. So, you know, homeowner can't put three eat at Joe's signs up. They're not allowed to have commercial messaging on them at all, but they can have any non-commercial messaging. That, but there's a another case that's Reagan versus the City of Austin that does allow for that um, kind of commercial speech is not as protected as as regular speech.
Sure.
And so you can make that determination. A number of cities have done it. A number of cities have kind of been tested on it. Again, this is gonna go to Mike Morris afterwards. I'm not a lawyer, but I've read a lot about signs and a lot about sign law.
Yeah, well, I just asked you to remember part of the whole reason for this is not totally the for, not the best.
Yep. And and that was the case at the beginning. Since then, I mean, not since then, but since then, I've read about the cases that have happened in twenty one and twenty two that kind of have changed that a little bit. Um, so we'll make sure that Mike feels really comfortable with everything I just said, but I think I think that it's pretty sound water. So, that being said. So what is the sign allowance that we want to allow residential homes?
Hmm.
So when you say on their commercial messages, but if somebody is having their roof replaced by so and so, they can put up a temporary sign for while the proof is being
So I would say that we should write that into as a qualifying event with a proper building permit.
Cause that'd be considered a commercial sign, right? Yeah.
They think it doesn't require.
Gutters.
You're, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. You're right.
I can see it. It seems easy at first, but then it's
Yeah, you're like, hold on. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And trust me, my brain has melted for a few weeks over now. It's difficult to try to capture everything. And you want to allow people to do something, but you also don't want to allow too much, and then people start doing something, or it does get cluttered.
Especially when trying to do your roof and your gutters, and they both want.
Which one do I like better? Yeah. Who gave me the better deal?
The solution to that is if it's on the house. Yeah.
Huh? The solution is no commercial sign whatsoever. You don't get to put a sign in the yard of house you're working on.
How does that work for for sale?
Yeah, how does that work for real estate? Isn't that a commercial sign? That's that's true. I would think that that would be different because you can't, you have to rely on that to get a sale.
So I think we can definitely do it for a qualifying event, which is a sale, a building permit. The other things, I don't know.
So.
What if, does it have to be building permit? Can it not just be the act of that service happening at the house at that time, and then within the ten days, they would have to take this?
But then how do we, how does Carla know if that, if that work is still going on?
What the period of that qualifying event is?
Yeah, but on landscape, they don't need necessarily a permit for that.
That's an ongoing, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, if you're, if you, if your yard, yard guy comes every two weeks, does that mean you just leave a sign up all the time for him? And then if he has a hundred houses in town, does that mean he just gets a hundred signs permanently up everywhere all the time?
Good one for your yard, yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem like a temporary sign to me.
No.
No.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Take it away for a day and then bring it back.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's If so, like the landscaping or gutters, it doesn't require a permit, then I mean, and they maybe to me like a qualifying event isn't necessarily that permit was pulled, but like you can clearly see like the gutters are there. It seems like the gutter job has been finished. There's not.
Right, but then how do we, how do we determine when that needs to go away?
Like.
Well, when you, I guess when you don't see crews on site, I mean, or
But then I think, but it's again, that lot, that's a gray area because they can argue like there's no set lap. Yeah, exactly, like.
My gutters for six weeks.
Yeah, can we do something where? Can you do something where like, you know, for the multifamilies, you require a temporary sign authorization? For maybe for like temporary signs that are of a commercial nature would require a temporary sign authorization from the city, then you can define the period. You know, the, the, the works can be going from this day to this day. You have ten days from this day to remove it.
Yeah, I mean, it puts the kind of hassle on whoever it is that wants that sign in the yard. So if it's somebody doing landscaping and he really wants his sign in the yard during that ten days while he's doing landscaping, he would have to fill that out and come to us. And we are trying, we're gonna make that process very seamless, like very easy.
Do it online.
Yeah, do it online. Doesn't cost anything. It would probably take less than five minutes.
Would there be a way that a person just walking down the street would know, okay, that sign was approved by the city, and that sign was not, like, they wouldn't?
Um, it would just be a tool for our code enforcement to be able to better enforce that. What I don't want to do is write an ordinance that is difficult to enforce. I don't like having ordinances on the books that we just overlook. Um, so if we had something there, I want to make sure that we've got an enforcement plan for it as well.
Let me, I'm, I'm gonna throw out a little card here over there on um um, C secret is a lot that still has a for sale sign, but I'm, I'm making an assumption it's sold. Um, and then now there's a sign there uh, for whoever possibly might be building, developing this lot.
Still for sale.
Oh, okay. Well, there's a sign there.
She wishes it sold.
Okay, well, I'm just adding on. So in that case, in no work, there's no permit. So is that an allowable advertisement essentially is what that's?
No.
Not part of the under that's a lot.
Okay.
Yes.
So.
Do you know which one I'm talking about?
So let's say, let's say that the sign ordinance as written here is approved and in place. I would say the for sale sign is probably definitely allowable. That property is for sale.
Right.
The developer sign, you can't put the sign up until you've got something in place. Until you've got that qualifying event. So until you have that building permit in your hand, then the developer would be able to put this sign up.
Oh.
Could, on the building permit side, is it possible to worry? Cause you, you know this more than any of us. Sometimes I'll submit for a permit, not knowing if you get a permit or not, and that's not giving a look of hey, this is going in the file, no permit required. Could it be submission for a permit or something to where you know, there's cases where we're in a remodel award that doesn't require a permit. We do submit it to you guys to make sure we don't. Um, so something to work on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that would be good. I, yeah, I think that we could make that that link to that.
Sure.
You guys, I mean, the city requires contractors to be registered with the city. So can there be a um part of the registration or the contract, for lack of a better word, with the contractor that says you can only, the, the instructions to that gutter guy, or, you know, the power washer, whatever.
require people be registered with the city in the case that they have to pull a permit. Long guys, gutter guys, and power washers, painters don't have to be registered. And even if they were getting people to follow the rules, it's just, well, I'm not opposition.
I would call back the fault position and they just put it up, and then the city invite and picks it up after they get mad enough.
I would like to get away from that, of course, um. Plan that we've been doing for quite a while now. I would like to have a definitive set of rules, definitive plans for enforcing those.
To make every homeowner, every property owner aware of the rules. So you're gonna have like long service by, long service by, you know, they're gonna be all over the place where people didn't realize they had the help of go through that, because it's some long guy from Ingleside, and he didn't check that he was supposed to go online, you know?
Yeah.
So I mean, it's always good, but and it's trying to make it less messy.
Less messy. So how do you guys feel? I mean, do you put signs out when you're doing gutters? We have long bags.
Yeah, if we want more work, we will, you know, um, that's something that we want to feature. Um, we do it less um, than we used to, but times have kind of changed since then, but you know, it's, it's still a good tool that will get leads off of. I mean, it's especially, you know, you know, at least the neighbors will come out and ask, ask what you're doing. So I mean, I think it's a, it's an important tool for a small business, you know, um, it'd be nice to be able to continue to do that. You know, in the case of gutters for us, you know, sometimes, you know, we're only on site for two, three hours. You know, but you know, in cases like some of Chad's stuff, you know, they're doing a remodel for six months.
What about if we did this? What about if we wrote in that you are allowed to do it while you're actively onsite working?
Yeah, I mean, again, back to the how will the city know when it's finished or not? But I mean, that's a I, it's a good rule of thumb, and you, you know, then if there were a sign that we're sitting there forever and ever, and there's no sign of any gutter work happening, then the city could say, I mean, just like they contact us when, every month when my vacant lot, one gets too long. And they're like, hello, you need to, you know.
And you've probably noticed that that enforcement has kind of increased over the last year and a half or two years or so, because we've gotten that second code enforcement officer. They're both out there doing all of that, and it it's, you know, it's definitely increasing.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, couldn't it be the same concept? Like, hey, homeowner, I see that you have, I mean, of course you don't have email addresses for every single owner, but the code says you send a letter, right? So like, you could still generate letters that say hey, we see you have this sign, and we don't know if the work is still going on. Here's the ordinance, please remove it if not.
Yeah.
That's tedious, but.
How it, it would be a lot. Um, what about if they were, I mean, like if you guys were working on gutters and you wanted to put a sign up and you put the sign in the yard while you were there, and you took the sign away when you left?
That's what we do.
Okay.
And then if you don't, the city picks up the sign and and disposes of it. So you're wasting your own money at that point. You didn't take it with you.
Well, we, we don't dispose of it like that.
Thirty days or something, right?
Yeah. Hey, hey. Yeah, I know. We get, we always get
Pick up your sign.
Somebody else, it's like, you need to know that. And I'm like, well, I'm not the mowing person. I'm not that person, but like, if there's a phone number, then I guess the enforcement person could just call and say, are you done here? Because our ordinance requires, and so I'm gonna pick up the sign in two days. You need to come get it. And I guess it should say that in here, but.
So what kind of timeframe? So I was talking about while they're actively working, while those people, that long guy, that gutter guy, that roofer is on sick, anything that doesn't need a
But it's, there's always some left here. I mean, there's lots and houses with signs that have been there for months and months.
No, I get it, because we haven't.
We, we can't go on private property to do that. You can remove the ones in the ride.
Hmm. So what I'm thinking is if we were to change this in a way that says if a qualifying event is a building permit, so all the people that are covered by building permits can do that, or contracted work that is actively going on, and then spell out that ordinance, I mean, spell that out in writing that says, you know, the contractor has to be actively onsite working that day. And then from an enforcement standpoint, we would, if she sees a sign out there that nobody is working on that house, she'll call the number on the sign.
Yeah.
And say, look, I can either write you a citation, or I can pick up this sign and you can come pick it up.
Or if it's not in the right of way, like I'll write you a citation, but you need to pick up that.
Yeah, but if, if the sign owner gives her permission, then she can take the sign.
Yeah.
I'll verify that with our city attorney to see if that's a good method, but does that seem like?
I think that seems like a fair shake. Yeah.
I would think another avenue would be if, as a business, if you knew you were gonna be working on ten houses down the street, you'd become a good city and get approval. They write a date on it.
Well, if you're
Well, that's what that
Yeah, it's likely
The gutters, I mean, they're Well, what about like architecture services? Like, you're not gonna have a permit to do that, but maybe you want to advertise on a vacant lot that, hey, I'm designing.
But if they have, if they have a building permit, then they could, we could allow that.
They don't have a building permit during the course of the drawing. You know, I don't know, just another thought.
Yeah, but nobody's really calling that architect until they start seeing the house going. And they're like, that's a cool house.
Yeah, so I guess you just wait until
Mm hmm.
I don't see a lot of too much going around.
Yeah.
That's active disruption.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, the active, the person active onsite are only for the ones that don't need a permit. The ones that do need a permit, like fools, I would say the act of having a permit
Allows you to
Allows you to have this.
Fair.
Okay. So I'm going to rewrite this section to mirror what we're about to read in the next section about qualifying events. So just to be clear, this is gonna be, we allow one one sign, one temporary sign, or anybody can put up a temporary sign, one. You can put up additional temporary signs with a qualifying event. With a building permit, with a sale.
Up to three.
Up to three.
Three, okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna rewrite that in a way that allows for that. Now, I did put on here, no single temporary sign may exceed four square feet. Jana, I kind of wanted your opinion on this. So previously, we allowed a three square foot sign with two half a square foot rider.
With one, yeah, with a half a square foot rider.
Which allowed for a four square foot sign.
Well, no, it was, it was um it only allowed It only, you'll make the, the current ordinance allows for a three inch. With a half a square foot. Rider, which is.
Does it say three inches? I think it just says a half a square foot.
But which would be three, like most signs were that.
Right.
So full, so that would be a three inch rider and most riders are six inches. So it's like every single real estate sign out there is.
Not right. So. I wanted to eliminate the riders. However, you guys want to split that up if you want a sign and then the riders. I wanted to just combine that square footage allowance and say however you want to do it.
Yeah.
I think four feet or five feet is appropriate. I wanted everybody else's opinion on that.
Well, so here it says four feet and then five feet in height, but still four feet in area. Is that the intention?
Correct. Which that mirrors the, the ordinance that allowed it up.
So then I would ask, do you want to try to limit? Like the size of the sign frame and structure, cause some people have like. Six by six posts with like a thing and the sign is only the three square feet, but it's hanging from like a. A ADU unit.
I've seen the ones that you're talking about.
You know.
Um, so our ordinance does later on talk about general provisions for all signs and that frames aren't measured as part of the sign area as long as. As determined by the administrator, that frame isn't above and beyond.
Yeah.
Okay.
So a lot of the municipalities have a six square foot max. And so you can split it up and that usually takes into account.
Six square foot max for what? All signs on the property?
Um, no, it's for, for any temporary sign.
Okay, so here I wrote in, I wrote in all, uh, the total combined area of all temporary signs on the lot shall not exceed eight square feet. Meaning I didn't want people to have three, when we were allowing everybody have three temporary signs, I didn't want to let everybody have three. Four foot temporary signs.
Putting any by posts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we want to keep it at the four square feet? Do we want to increase it to five square feet?
So. Jana, did you, does the four? Square feet seem to work for?
I mean, in the last time, five sign and a normal. And like when you buy a sign frame, we don't, but like a lot of people buy like. Frames for signs on like Amazon and that's the size they count. They count for a three foot thing and a one, and a one, one square foot rider.
What if you have two riders? So you know, some people have the name and then for sale or for rent or whatever. So that might.
So then, I mean, you would.
Yeah.
See the four.
Yeah.
So over here.
I think a five would, yeah.
I pulled some, some signs from our storage locker in the back. Um, and so that blue sign is a five foot square foot sign. Now, I don't think that real estate signs would necessarily be that, those dimensions, but that's kind of the.
Sideways, you'd have a foot on both.
Yeah, and so I didn't feel like. Visually, three, four, five square feet really make that much of a difference.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Think we need.
Yeah.
Think we need to be minimal.
Five's okay?
I mean, you still have a.
It's all, it's all digital now.
So I mean, having, having one at five feet, you still have your overall map.
Which means that another one would have to be smaller.
Yeah.
Or that maybe they couldn't have that third sign if they have a five square foot.
Yeah.
Real estate sign and a three square foot.
It would still force them to come to the city or, you know, only have one. Yeah, very exactly. So I don't think that one square foot of difference is gonna.
So the uh, eight square feet, so I'm gonna change this to add the qualifying events for the extra temporary signs. Eight square feet total. So all the temporary signs that you have on your property can't add up to be more than eight square feet. Does that, that's something that's brand new that we discussed at the sign committee meetings. Does that feel like? It's still a fair.
Seems like based upon up to the three, if they have three, there's a pretty good chance that you'll run a foul of, of that eight.
One would have to be smaller. So we could increase it to nine.
I'm gonna say if you have three, three square foot ones.
I guess.
Which is a standard size.
Yep, the discussion that we had at the sign committee meeting was to allow those three were to allow the home game tonight signs, the real estate signs. And the very small. Um.
Alarm.
Alarm company signs that are typically one square.
Yeah.
So in that situation, a fourth foot real estate sign, a three foot developer sign or home game tonight sign and a one square foot. Sign add up to be eight and that's kind of what we were trying to allow. So that's why we picked another eight to put.
We boosted a nine then, so you have a five foot. Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Sure.
And then your alarm sign.
Yeah. Political signs are going to be dictated by the state and don't go towards your um, sign allowance.
You got a real estate sign, you could have a, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And you're trying to sell.
Yeah. I think bump it to not, yeah. Yeah.
Then what if, I guess it would be more of a permanent sign and not a temporary sign, but what if you had a sign for like well water? Cause I've seen that.
So that is a required sign by a public utility company. If you're using well water, you have to show that so that we have exempted later on. So I think that's a different situation that we don't have to.
Short turnaround sign saying.
Correct.
Problem calls number.
Right.
Required by the city.
And those are, when we get back down to the exempted signs, um, you'll see that those are all written in there. Okay, so I think that was the one that was gonna take the longest and then it helps the rest of our situation here. So moving on to the temporary signs on multifamily residential lots.
Sorry, go ahead. Number four. So some properties have a fence all the way around, right at the property line.
Okay.
So if you want to display a sign.
You'd have to do it on the other side of that.
Where, where it'd be completely not visible.
Better, no, no, I meant, I, I'm saying you'd have to do it on the other side of that. Typically in those situations, the fence is right on the property line. So if you did it on the other side, you're already in violation by being in the city right of way.
Right.
So. We could allow them on fences. Right now, our current ordinance does not allow signs on fences.
I mean, what we do a lot of times in that situation is instead of the sign being perpendicular. We just put it, but we're not attaching it to the fence, cause not everybody wants a group hole in their fence. So we're just putting it flat up against the fence there.
So that.
But technically, it's, it's in there, the.
Yep.
Yep.
It stopped being enforced a while ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good for now. Is that still gonna be a thing?
We're gonna get to that discussion. So that was something that the sign committee had discussed, having a setback for those temporary signs. I have no strong opinion over it either way. Regular permanent signs are allowed to be right at the front property line.
I mean, I think it should be addressed because they're, the help, the properties that have fencing right on the property line with no break in it or no. Place to display a sign, they can't just be automatically out of compliance. So maybe it should specify if you're going to have these signs.
If you're able.
Flat up against, on your post, right up against the fence line within, you know, ten inches of your vents or something.
But if it's on, if proper fence right at the right of way, then could you put them on there and there and right of way and there.
That's what I'm saying, but we're, we're, I'm talking about an exception for properties that have a fence that obstructs. Any area that would be visible from the public right of way for that will be.
What I'm saying is basically, it's my, my question that is always allowing them to put a sign in the right of way.
That's why I'm saying you limit it to so many inches or whatever, like it has to basically hug the fence. Like if you were to make an exception and say. You can have a sign that has got to be.
So how about?
Sitting at like where we normally would.
How about this? All temporary signs must be located a minimum of three feet from the property line unless otherwise approved by the city. And in those situations. You just have to call and talk to us about it. We'll put something in our system that says, I talked to this person on this date, this sign location is good. We might maybe in that situation, make somebody fill out one of those temporary sign authorizations. That's going to be very.
Minimum of three feet, is that new?
Yes. It was a discussion. It was an arbitrary number that was discussed and I put it in there because said I would put all things in there.
I think you should just put behind. But if it's a six foot fence, what's the point of having a sign? If it's behind a six foot fence.
I would approve by the city. You know what I'm saying?
Three, three feet without the fence.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Unless otherwise approved by the city and then you could put it in front hugging the fence or something.
Right, so just behind the property line. So I, I don't, I don't.
So you're saying take the three feet out?
Yeah.
I asked my question, so I don't understand what that serves. I don't remember that conversation and, and maybe I missed that meeting, but I.
It was a very small part of the conversation. I'm, it is not gonna hurt my feelings if it gets taken out.
Sure.
It, like I said, permanent signs are allowed to be right up to the front property line.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't know, I don't remember what the purpose was, uh, and the thing we're trying to fight people putting in the right of way, but.
Nope. I think it was just to make it much more clear that they were in the right of way or not in the right of way.
So could it be recorded to say all temporary signs must be located inside the front property line unless otherwise approved by the city?
How about I just take that out completely? In a situation like you were discussing, we probably wouldn't have any enforcement action on that sign because. We don't know exactly where that property line is. We can assume that maybe a fence is built three inches into that property line and your sign is good. We're not gonna, we're not gonna nitpick about an inch or two inches or three inches.
And I think the goal, the goal from what I remember us talking about was more safety side of it. Like that it's back far enough when we, you pull up, you're looking down the sidewalk and it's far enough.
I think it was about every, I mean, I think people brought up visual clutter when we discussed it, um, safety aspects. Because these signs, remember, not like permanent signs can be much, you can have many more. So on a street, if you had. Three residences in a row that had these signs, you have nine signs out on the property line, which could be visually cluttering.
You can't take it over, but I. Couldn't have walked down that side of it.
So you're saying we're number four altogether?
I think that's the discussion right now, yes.
I don't picture it.
No.
But so then temporary signs, which is like a real estate sign can always just be in the right of way?
Nope, can't.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Why would you want to remove? That's essentially for is at least. Keeping it on the property.
In others, in other situations, it does say that they all have to be on, on private property, outside of the right of way. Yes.
Not do it.
You cannot put a, a sign in the right of way unless you are the.
So this is only applying to temporary signs, but other, other places within this document, it says any sign cannot.
Must be on private property with the property owner's consent.
Yeah, but I don't, I wouldn't want it to just where people can just throw stuff out there.
This just takes away the required setback for temporary signs on residential property. Okay, so I'm gonna remove that. Sorry, give me one second. Okay, so moving to temporary signs on multifamily residential lots. This is the same allowance for real estate signs on these lots. And all we've done is added in the qualifying events. Okay, do we want to add in the same wording for contractors actively working onsite? That we did for regular residential into this section as well.
Yeah, and then remove number four.
Assume that we want to do that on commercial locations too.
Yes.
Okay.
There's, there's some benefit having whoever's commercially working on property advertising, because if Bartle pulls up and sees. The sign there, I don't think they have a permit. She, she knows who's on the site. Osha pulls up, they know who to call.
If a neighbor has. Yeah, if a neighbor has paint overspray, they might call that company directly rather than calling us and us saying, you gotta call the company direct.
Yep.
I, I agree.
And then we would.
Yeah, right.
Yes, yeah.
Correct. Um. Yeah. So this is one thing that number two. I put in, we didn't really discuss at the sign committee, but many people live permanently in a. Detached condo situation. That might want to have those home games tonight or those different, you know, individual signs there. So I wrote in number two. In a way that allowed them to have the same allowance as a Channel Vista House in. A condo type situation, a detached condo type situation. So I completely made this up without anybody's input. So you guys definitely give me input here. Okay. And I tried to keep it because that lot is so big, you don't want everybody to put theirs out on the street. So I said it had to be within ten feet of the front plane of that house. Um, trying to, to make them. Adhere to the same rules that people naturally do. In regular situations.
This, maybe it's like, you go down the level three, you just find a complex that's got eight units per sale. They're all just piled up in front. They would have to be really closer to the unit.
So I did this as not the qualifying event sign. So in that situation, it would be a qualifying event and they're allowed. One square foot per unit up to a hundred square feet in a big condo complex like that. They typically divide them up into a little individual signs. So I don't think that solves that situation.
But people just look down rows and there are all the kids on game night, they can say, go Marvin for game night on their.
Right, I think it's people like in.
Yeah.
Um, where those are, you know, different kind, or Ocean Village, where you've got those houses. If you had a bunch of people that lived in those houses that wanted to put, you know, my kid's a senior. I want to give them the opportunity to do that in the same way you would be able to in Allen Warren, so Canada does there. Okay.
Smart.
Um. And then. Yeah, number three covers you there, Jana. All temporary signs must be located entirely on private property. Um. We can write that into the, to the previous section too, just to make it clear, but it's mentioned many times in the ordinance. So I have any. Any doubt in being able to enforce that. Um, okay, so the section D is kind of their permanent. Sign allocation, which does not change from what the previous ordinance allowed. It allowed the forty square feet or to twenty-five squ- square foot identical signs. It allowed the second street frontage additional signs. Kept everything.
Does it talk about, I remember, I think it, you, there used to be a thing where you couldn't have like a V shaped sign because that was considered. Two, two times, but if it's back to back, like a sign that has a front and a back, one facing north, one facing south, then that's just only.
One side.
Still be.
On both sides.
And if it was a V shape, it would be, where is that written in here?
So. There is, um. We had it currently, where was it in the other section? It was in the general. We ju- we actually just covered this with somebody that was not doing their sign correctly. Um. Uh, it is, so it's, it'll, it'll be in a different section where we talk about double face signs and that they have to be, yep, that it. It counts as one sign. You can have sign copy on both faces, provided that it, the gap there is only about twelve inches.
Yeah.
So you can't have just a giant box out there.
And they're parallel to one.
Correct. Okay, so. I, I feel like uh, D is pretty, um. Because we haven't changed anything, because we really haven't um, done anything different in that section except write it, write it out instead of table format. I think that that's a pretty innocuous section as well. So we'll move on to the commercial use. We put a purpose in there, um, from everybody that I've talked to. They said that having a purpose in there gives you more. Clout when you're doing enforcement action, you know, that you have an answer for people. Well, why can't I do this? Well, why? Why are you limiting it like this? Having that kind of language in there is helpful. Again, they have the qualifying events that allow their signage. This was a little trickier than the residential because. In our current ordinance, we allow different size signs for different things. And that's what made it not constitutional. So. I went with kind of the. The. Size of the sign that I felt we could all swallow. For these temporary events. And that was a sixteen square foot sign. So in some situations, people are allowed to have a twenty-five square foot sign. In some situations, they're allowed to have one square foot for, for. Building frontage. Um, so that can be a discussion item here. If you guys think that is not enough, too much, needs to be different. And this is kind of why I've put these different size signs up in here.
So I, I was just a general question on if commercial, the residential to commercial, what if you have. Uh, residents located on the commercial zone block.
Uh, which is why specifically if you go back to, um. This section, uh, back to nineteen eighteen, this section establishes standards for signs located within areas associated with residential uses. Instead of saying a residential zone or a residential district, um, we might need to change the title of that.
Yeah, cause if you have a house that's located.
Yeah, cause if you have a house that's located in between two businesses, then do you follow commercial?
You're, I, I wrote this in a way that you follow the use because that's how we currently regulate signs. So if you live on Robert Street and you have a restaurant on one side of you and a bar on the other side of you, but your house, you are still a house. They are a resident. I mean, they are a commercial business. If they have, you know, if thirty-two or forty square foot sign, you're limited to your residential uses, which is how we currently do it.
During, uh, uh, commercial, this side is our odd, does that make you commercial?
Probably makes you illegal, but.
Different, well, it's like, say you're running, making count cabinets or.
As manufacturing.
Right? Yes.
But there are some, I mean, legal uses, like you've been.
You have home occupation.
Accounting office or whatever, but like that still wouldn't be your overall use. It's just a peripheral thing in your residence that would be the use.
Okay.
Okay, uh, commercial, do you sign, so we're talking like even boat bar and so things of this nature too.
Yes, ma'am. That's a commercial use. Yep. Anything that's not residential. Um, these allowances are kind of what they're allowed right now. So I didn't change any of that, just put it in a non-table format. Same thing with the, um, multi-tenant and mixed-use developments, same allowances. I didn't really change it. Um, the only thing that was changed was the temporary allowances to make them all every temporary type sign is the same size. You don't get one size for real estate, one size for new tenant coming soon, one size for new construction. Everybody gets the sixteen square feet. And so it is reduced in some of those situations. The real estate sign was always allowed to be sixteen square feet. New construction, um, was twenty-five.
This is kind of on, not exactly on the same topic, but back to the properties that are totally fenced to the property line. There are commercial ones like that too.
Correct.
So would there be the same allowance where you could put your two four by four posts right up against the sign, I mean, up against the fence?
I think we would have to probably look at those as we go. Because I mean, if you came to us and said, well, my fence is four inches inside my property line, we're not gonna go and try to.
Yeah.
You know, make sure. But if you put that feet in front of your fence, we'll definitely. But if they wanna put it directly on that fence, we'll have discussion a little bit later on if that would be allowed or not.
So a development under construction. If it's limited to sixteen square feet, that's for your builder, your site plan, all of your information. And then you also have, and that's it. That's all you get.
Those temporary, it's not permanent.
I know, but as it's going through construction. Because that, that doesn't.
And financing, you have any architect, you have the general contractor.
And then if you have individual units, do you allow for the individual?
This is personal, not, not whole family. This is if you're building a.
Well, let's take, uh, let's take the Presbyterian church, for instance, and I don't know what we're calling that one.
It would be commercial, because it's not residential. Commercial is, remember, s- commercial is everything that's not residential. Right, single family.
On that fence, they've got barcom, they've got, I don't know how many different things are being displayed on that fence, but how much of that is not qualifying as being a part of this?
Probably most.
Okay. So just trying to get some clarification on.
Yep. So previously, construction signs, you're allowed to have one per square, or one per street frontage and thirty-two square feet. Future tenant signs, you're allowed to have one per street frontage and twenty-five square feet. New business sign, one square feet per each linear foot of building frontage. And so that is the non-constitutional part. We can't have different allowances for different types of signs in the same district in the same spot. The size sign that we do wanna allow is up for debate. I put sixteen because that was the standard real estate size sign in those locations. If it needs to be bigger, if it needs to be smaller, now is the time to have that discussion.
Well, man, I agree. If you're gonna have architect and bank and general contractor and gutter people, then really probably is a little better.
Okay.
And, and we can, you know, I almost say like a four by eight, but that's.
Four by eight right here.
Yeah.
That's forty square feet, so that's eight, that's eight square feet more than what they were allowed right now.
Right, but it would be vertical, cause I'm assuming that you don't have like three quarters of it and everybody gets little section on the bottom.
So this would be the four, the thir- the, I'm sorry, the four by eight is the thirty-two square feet or two of those four by four.
Has to be one sign for all of them?
Not necessarily. It just allows us.
You don't typically see people coordinating.
It just allows a square footage.
Right, but it keeps it also, it keeps them from everybody putting a four by eight of their sign up there, but they at least put.
It does not, it does not have to be all on one side. They're allowed this.
Maximum square foot.
Yeah, well, maximum allocation of what they can use, yeah.
Hang on, I, I, the wording I put in here does say one. And the other signs do say one. So I, I apologize, I take that back. It does say that they're allowed one.
Yeah, I think that that's gonna be really, in the case that Belisha mentioned, you're not gonna have your architect, your builder, your.
Right now, you shouldn't.
And your, yeah, bank financing availability to like share a sign. They all have signs that they want to put.
And had we been enforcing all of these rules, they would not be allowed to have what they have right now.
One thing, and that's why I say if you allow, say, four, each gets two by four, which is reducing sizes path out right there. Now, your financing, you have your architecture, you have your general contractor and a subcontractor, whoever, you know, on there.
Which is helpful from the business aspect, less helpful from the sign and visual clutter aspect. So I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate on both sides.
One ugly big sign or four small ugly signs.
I mean, bam, 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 I can see four signs out of that. I mean, it, it depends on how picky the people are about how much.
It, it's gonna be.
Problem is I'm coordinating to make it all on one sign and. It adds, as it's written right now, it has to be one sign.
Ordinance stands, it's supposed to be.
Maybe we change that language to. Yeah, four signs or, exactly. Yeah.
And then, and then to, to balance that, if the architect gets his sign up first and it takes up the whole sign allowance, or it takes up half the sign allowance, then there's still that.
So if they do the bank financing, like, hey, you can put sign, it just can only be a two by four. Or, you know, and then.
But that's not for the, that's not for the city to coordinate, that would be for the property owner.
But if you have it spelled out where if there can be like four big sponsors or whatever advertiser, however you wanna go with that, they each know up ahead, they have a two by four to give them their total, uh, thirteen square feet.
I'm okay with splitting it up over different signs. I just wanted to point out that that does take away from the, um, clutter aspect.
They're temporary.
Temporary, but how long do things?
Months is temporary, unusual.
Uh, buil- building is two years.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, I think up to a certain square footage is great. Um, and I think if we have a max single size of four by eight would be great, cause you don't really want anything bigger than that. If somebody's gonna put a four by eight sign, they're probably gonna have the architect to move on, but they're probably gonna have everybody's information on there.
Thirty-two squares.
So, but if you also have sixteen units and they're for sale and you wanna, you wanna show which units are for sale and which units have sold, you also wanna be able to have the Realtor sign.
I think in a situation like that, you could, we could say that there could be more than one qualifying event. You can have the qualifying event that allows the construction, and if it's also currently listed for sale, that would be an additional qualifying event. A property like you're talking about with sixteen units, that's gonna be a pretty substantially sized property. So having two two sign allowances there might be okay. Guys, tell me.
Well, I, I also think back to what you were talking about on the residential for the multi-tenant, and that kind of falls under your individual for sale signs, when you have multiple.
I got an easy thing. How about we just do thirty-two square feet per access point to the property?
Like driveway or street frontage?
Well, like.
Well, I mean, like street access. So basically, if you're, you have a big subdivision and you have two entrances, you get sixty-four square feet of.
On the same street frontage though?
But they're gonna be, but they can't, that'd be it, that each entrance, you can't have them grouped up.
Like, um, let's think of, uh, Port A R B. Out on the highway, cause they've got two entrances there. And that's a pretty substantial frontage. So that would be a good example of what you're talking about.
Where it be for each entrance.
But then you have the palms over, oh, we under oaks, and you have six, seven.
Get out on the same subdivision.
It's the same complex. Yeah, it's a condo complex.
I mean.
I mean, you have some complexes that like Coral K has an out and an in. Or no, I'm thinking of Vanian Beach has a room right next door to the in and out of Coral K. And that's confusing, but each one of those would be allowed to have.
I feel like in some situations, it would be appropriate, but in some, it would be really a lot.
Yeah.
But which is why we've written street frontage, so that every street, you can have that allowance.
And that would solve.
Belisha, can you pull your mic down a little bit? Sorry about that. Okay, so it sounds like the consensus is more than sixteen square feet.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just think it's gonna be like, one guy, people just have signs already made for these purposes, right? I offer financing and those are usually like big, small, and that guy come and pops it down, then like then the builder puts up his sign that has his plans in the tube in it and it, it's like, but he can't now because.
Well, I think.
Oh, that's a different event.
Owner, if the owner says, look, you could usually, banks still have to ask permission to put their sign on there. Like, hey, put a sign there. You say, yes, that's be a two by four.
And I think most owners that I've ever dealt with would have no idea.
No, but your contractor typically is the one that's involved with that. So the only way that we can do those qualifying events is if there's some kind of permitting process. And so that's what I was talking to you about yesterday, um, about a free, easy, online, hey, we're gonna put up a temporary sign at this location. It's gonna be this size. And then us giving permission for those temporary signs beyond, not, not in any way discussing single-family residential little signs, or anything over five square feet. We can even write it a little bit bigger than that, just to make sure that nobody is mis- misinterprets that. So any temporary sign that needs to stay up has to have not a permit, but authorization from the city. So we would be approving those signs to go in those locations.
What would you do if like today you get a notice from an architect and they're like, we're gonna be working with this builder, doing this project, this RV park on the eleventh street, and then you're like, okay, and then the next day you get a bank, and then the next day you get, how do you like?
So we can, I mean, through our permitting system, we can definitely tie those to unique addresses and keep track of those. And then that person needs to take it up with the, the property owner. Really should be the one controlling the signs on their property.
That can be part of the permit is, you know, here's best practices for your signage. Make sure you include these three people or whatever, and you know, so that way the contractor that is having the sign made up, cause a lot of times the Realtor or the bank or the architect will split the cost of the sign in order to put it up if their information is on there. So, um, find a way of encouraging that through you know, up to sixteen square feet without, and then anything over sixteen has to go.
So if, say, you have the bank and the architect, they each go put a four by eight sign up there, same financing by X bank and sign by Joe Blow and, you know, construction by do recommend how. And the, the violation.
So I think we would initially, a- as she's driving around, she would say, oh, American Bank has a sign up there. Call the number. Hey, American Bank, you have a sign that you do not have this authorization from the city for.
Yeah, well, but, okay, that's fine. I'll say this, but you have one signs authorized, but the other two are not, so.
So if somebody else tried to come in and authorize a second sign, and it took it over the square footage that we would allow, you just wouldn't give them that authorization. That person would be responsible for going back to the property owner and figuring that out.
Okay, well, see, cause really, but it's true, I guess, the fact that property, is the property in responsibility to tell.
Property owner is always responsible for everything that happens on their property. Owner always pays.
Their, their bank, yes, you have a sign on a property, but I think it can only be a two by four, or it can only be a two by four.
That's their. If the property owner likes their real estate agent more than they like their architect, they'll give them more sign allowance. If they like their gutter guy, they'll give them more sign allowance. They're only allowed a certain amount, and that's the only way we can restrict it.
What I'm saying, basically, the question I put to the point was, it always falls back to the homeowner, so it's their responsibility to tell the bank, the architect and the thing, if they don't already know, this is the size they have.
Right. And in reality, that probably falls back to the contractor, the general contractor on a job, especially on a job that's that, of that size. I would imagine that that bank is calling the contractor.
They know it.
How do you guys feel? And does everybody feel kind of comfortable with?
I feel like it's a long project. They can do some, there's one, one or Ocean View, Havering G, that's pillar engineering and B L.
Right, you have.
That's residential, the size is too big to qualify, but this, it, it looks good. So if they're, you know, as good as it can look, so if there's a situation with those four people, it does seem like the contractor get together and say, all right, guys, we're gonna put all four of you on one sign, let's go to the sign shop. But it, it gets a lot less cluttery.
And I think that we see this proliferation of all of these different signs going up all the time because there hasn't been that enforcement mechanism before. And so it's gonna take a little while to get to that good spot, but I think once we get to that good spot, it will stay kind of, you know, it'll become a new standard here.
It can be tricky. I mean, there's, especially right now in this market, there's a whole lot of musical services. So like, just make a sign and it's got your four people, including your real estate agent and your lender, and then you get mad, or now you switch lenders, and you switch vendors, and the.
I'm okay with changing it from one sign to multiple signs that add up to a certain square footage.
You know, and it's, if it doesn't work after two years.
We can change it.
City, we go back, you know, if the, of course, if something doesn't work, let's, let's review it.
Yeah, so I mean.
We should review this stuff more often than.
I agree.
So I would say a single sign up to X amount and then combined signed up to actually, so then that way.
Okay. So instead of seeing X amounts, what amounts would you say there?
Well.
And it could be one sign that's thirty-two square feet or two signs that are sixteen. Or, but do we wanna put a limit on, do we want, I mean, I know this is ridiculous, but you don't want thirty-two, you don't want thirty-two one square foot.
Oh, I mean, that's gonna be pretty.
I know, I know, but if you, if you don't put stuff in there, you don't have a way to enforce that. If somebody put sixteen two square foot signs, that's something you don't want.
Maximum thirty square. Three or four.
What would be an appropriate?
One by, uh, one by five by two.
I mean, you could have, you could have, you could have ten, ten of those signs and then one additional two square foot sign. It's, it's not gonna accomplish what they want, so I don't think many people will do that, but somebody might, because it draws a lot of attention to that property.
I mean, you know, we could, we can go to this so deep that we, we're.
I also wanna preface it by saying, just because they have a qualifying event, doesn't mean that that sign has to coordinate with that qualifying event. They are allowed to have a thirty-two square foot sign for a qualifying event. They could put anything they want on that sign. That's, they, they could put, you know, I hate the city of Porter, it's or, you know, Joe is dumb. We can't dictate what they put on the sign. So that's why we wanna keep the kind of allowances pretty tight, because if somebody has a property for sale that's sixteen, you know, that, that they put one sixteen square foot sign up, and then they're like, well, I can put you know, four more, four square foot signs that, that say anything on them. That's why I think the limit on the number of signs.
Five signs aggregate.
Up to five signs, yeah.
Up to five signs of an aggregate of two square.
Should the aggregate be divisible by five, if it can be up to five signs?
No, it'd be just, that way they can have a, like a four square feet.
Standard, standard four by eight.
Well, I just figured, I mean, we can go four then. I don't really care. I just figured that that way you have signs not exactly two by four, uh, three by five.
Thirty, so thirty two square feet is allowed for a construction sign and that was the biggest that was allowed. For a temporary sign on a commercial lot before. I would say we probably don't need to go bigger than that.
I agree. I I agree. I've just. Well, that way it's just if they want to do two big signs, they could still do two smaller or maybe three small signs.
I think we're probably thinking about it much more than they will ever think about. What I'm hearing and tell me if anybody objects to this, thirty two square feet. And it can be split up onto up to five.
Right.
Agreed. Go for it.
Sounds good. Is that for, uh, for street access or is that just single per property?
So they, um.
I would say that's a property.
Do you have a corner lot? Or two?
Street front.
Okay, so if you guys read number three, under the temporary signs on individual commercial lots, number three sign standards. Um, the second bullet point, not exceeding, and we're gonna change that to thirty two square feet up to five signs. On properties fronting Highway three sixty one, south of Access Road one A. It gets a little bit bigger because you're driving faster. Science says that you need bigger signs with bigger wording for people to see. We could add in something there that allows a smaller, a smaller sign allowance on the alternative streets. But we also don't have to. I mean, when you have an address.
Sorry, I was on wrong page.
That's okay. Um, so number three on the top of page eight. We can add in a section there. That allows for additional signage on a second street frontage, but that means a corner lot. Would have. Ten signs.
But they could also have a V, right?
You could, right now, we don't allow. Uh, let me see what it says. Yeah, um, the construction sign, it does all say one per street frontage. Now we have gone away from the one and broken it down into five. I'm hesitant to put five signs on each street.
Well, what about if it's still up five or up to thirty two square feet? And you can split that up however you want on the street frontages. So, uh, but for those might be different.
Like, um, if you're on.
The banker and the realtor can only be on this side and the architect and the contractor can only be on that side.
Well, that that would be up to whoever's doing their project. I just have that decision about, oh, no, I I I think I'm gonna be better placed in this one. Then certainly would be doable, right?
Right, and if they're allowed thirty two square feet, they could put sixteen square feet on each sign front, on each street frontage and put everybody on one sign. I feel like. Thirty two square feet over five signs is a lot and they could figure out a way to make that work.
I'm sure they're worried.
So what I'm hearing is to just leave it alone on the secondary street frontages.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the authorization and the permitting of that. Sorry. The language in there for the authorization and and permitting, even though it's not really a permit. Um, it'll be handled through our system the same way, very easy and expensive. So that we have better control over that from an enforcement standpoint.
Now, these are signs, not banners, or are they banners that have been mounted?
Nope, these are rigid, made of a rigid material, um. Be constructed of durable materials capable of withstanding local wind loads. Um, and banners are labeled somewhere else in there. Yep, okay, so moving down to the commercial signage, this did not change except for it's not in a table format. So everything there is your allowance with your secondary sign allowance. On different street frontages, so that section did not change at all. A highway zone section also did not change. It just allows for those, um, additional. Square footages in areas where the speed limit is much faster. Then my section in blue here is where we need to talk about signs on fences.
So are they allowed on buildings like to be fixed to the side of a building?
Yep, any, except in residential zones. Any sign can be on a building. It does not count towards your sign allowance.
And when you say residential zones, that's R one and R two, like you're talking about.
Residential uses.
So can you, could I like paint snap on on my garage door?
No, because you can't have a commercial message in a residential use. That we are allowed to prevent.
Even if I paint out my garage, not a sign?
I don't know. I mean, you could probably.
I mean, I'm just curious, because it's just.
You mean paint on your garage door?
So I think it would be, I think it would be, I think we could consider it an off premise sign, which is not allowed. I think we could commit. Consider it a commercial message in a residential area, which is not allowed. And I think we would be able to defend that.
So like.
See what the court say.
So the question is, do you want to allow people to mount signs on fences?
Right now, the ordinance does not allow that and that has not been well enforced. For a number of years. What is, what is the reasoning?
Commercial or residential right now?
Correct.
And what is, what is the reasoning behind not allowing? Signs on fences.
I wasn't here when they wrote it, so I don't know.
I I'm gonna take a guess, but I don't know. My guess is he keep from, uh, attaching banners to the fences.
Or leaving an entire, I mean, think about a whole, like if Port A R B, if they made that whole links, one sign.
Well, I do remember this discussion was the chain link and people putting the solo.
I was about to ask about that, yeah. How does that like?
Somehow allow that. You had an idea, but I don't remember if that was. The case I liked from the very first meeting.
I don't remember talking about solo cups.
Like how the, yeah, like the softball fields and stuff, you know, like, but the, yeah, exactly.
So right now, the best example and hopefully he's not listening and he doesn't hear me kind of beating him up is, um. The sign that's at Woody's last stand. They don't have a permanent sign out front. They only have the signs that are on their fences. And they probably exceed the square footage that a normal sign would be allowed and they've added more over the last few years. I don't think it's a safety issue. I don't think it's a visual issue. I don't think the sign on the fence looks any different than the sign. You know, on a pole somewhere would look, except for, huh?
That difference, your fence not wind, wind loaded where your, uh.
His are mostly, his are mostly painted, but yes, that's a good, that's a good.
Yeah, it's banner for the banner against the fence and also for a painting fence and also it goes from being a. Like, uh, windbreak, but a thing to a wall and.
And it does affect kind of the the wind velocity of that.
Banners are how the like wind pass through.
Sure, so my thought is. That we write it in a way that allows that sign on the fence if that sign. On the fence square footage goes towards their allowable sign. So just because he's painting a sign on his fence, doesn't mean he gets a hundred linear square feet of a sign. Because he's a commercial location that would be allowed to have forty square feet.
Dumb questions. What's the difference between me putting a sign on a fence and me putting a sign on a post?
You you should have the same allowance regardless of which way you're gonna do it. If you're a commercial business, whether you put that sign on a fence or whether you put that sign on a. Sign, you should have the same square.
What about a mural?
Tricky, it gets very, very tricky.
Oh, yeah, that's back to, or if I paint my house, you know, John Deere green, am I advertising a tractor or am I just painting my house green?
It's like you don't have John Deere on it.
I don't have an answer to every.
Or a yellow stripe.
Not, but.
Pioneer, those their fences are at their front property, so I'm gonna then put a a sign. Towards the road there is about an option.
But they have, but they do, if you think about Pioneer, they do have that fence. They have their forty foot or whatever that square footage allowance sign it is. Do we also give them the free rein of putting as many signs as they want on that fence?
Or painting your fence as a sign.
I think that I guess in my stupidity, I was already assumed that that will they. That would have counted as a sign and they couldn't use it. I mean, if they had a sign out front, they couldn't use their fence as additional signage.
Right now, when it just says no signs on fences.
So, a- and is this, it it doesn't matter if it's temporary or a permanent sign, like if you. Have a property for sale and again, it's like on the highway, so it's high rate of speed. And there's no way to have a sign there really because the fence is on the property line.
I think the discussion is fair for both uses. I mean, I think regardless, if we make a rule about signs on fences, it should be the same for temporary and permanent fence.
Where it puts limitation, you're gonna attach it to the fence, I mean, there, there's thirty two or forty, whatever.
I do, it should count for your signage.
Okay, now caveat to that.
That's fair.
Is just the artwork.
Yeah.
Or just the words.
Yeah, well, I think we've had.
Because we're, if somebody right now were to paint a mural on a fence, that's allowed. If somebody were to paint a mural on a fence that says Edith Joe's, then it's a sign.
I mean, so that should answer your question.
What about on a, on a air airplane hangar?
That's directly in a building and that's okay. It's much different than a fence.
But but I get that didn't answer your question, because one's a mural and the other is a sign.
But then once a mural has words in it.
So, okay, people paint sign on draw faces. Is that different than a fence that's considered like?
On the building?
I would say any, so what I wrote here in blue on this page, and I apologize, on my computer screen, it was like a highlighter and here it's like a dark mark where you can't read the words. Um, these were kind of my initial thoughts about it. Um, and I put it at the end, signs placed on deck railings, porch railings and other architectural elements that are part of a permanent building structure shall be treated as wall signs, which are allowed. So if you drive past, when you leave here, if you drive past the dock, they've got the balcony railing where they've got their banners put on those. I would consider those like wall, wall signs and not do that, but if they had fence at that front property line and put banners on the fence, then it's. And and that's a good example. It's right across the street at Sam Bar. They've got that situation, then that's a banner on a fence, first sign on a fence.
I'm not, this is the bud, is make any sign that any any fence that has wording on it must be wind loaded or wind engineered.
And so that was one of my things is the sign is.
Take care of all that.
Real quick, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's easy to do with. Signs that you attach to a fence, but if you're painting the fence, then.
What, if we go in difference between art and a sign, what if there was a requirement that any verbiage had to have a visible? Frame.
Sure.
Around that that fits within the.
So I'm gonna.
Guidelines, but the art is art.
I'm gonna bring this up right now. And again, got no issue with Woody's last stand. They were just a really good example of. Lots of signs on fences and this is not what it, I mean, I'll start crashing there.
The permanent line?
Yeah.
It's really.
So when this, when this went up, there was no enforcement of any of this. And so we, this has been allowed to go on and it doesn't really look like this anymore. Now there are. Many more additional signs on that.
Like the straw painting.
Um, there's also art that that is truly, you know, pictures of things, murals of things. I do reckon.
Go back to the Harley boats, you know, they have words on them, probably in the outline of the sign.
I think we should write that in, in as an exemption.
But I mean. I I'm kind of opinion, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, browse by analysis.
I agree.
I think that we should just say that you paint your songs, you paint your vents and it counts against your thirty two square feet if it has words on. Or counts against your, uh.
Allowance.
Allowance if it has words on.
They can draw a dolphin, they could draw boats, big fishing.
So like if, if Woody's, if that Woody's portion was actually. You've got some artwork. And then you've got some wording. Do you count the whole box of Woody's with the artwork?
I think I'm gonna give you the example. Can you go to, uh, Beach Mark real quick? And if you go towards the back, there is a, uh, storage unit that has a turtle mural on it. And it just says, welcome to Porter Anzis. Is that a sign to you?
I mean, by definition.
Even though it it references no business.
I still think it's a non-commercial sign. I mean, it's still something that's. I think it meets the definition of sign if it's a sign that we regulate or not. Then that's different, but I think it would be a a sign. Sorry, I was talking with my hands, can't do that in total at the same time.
So, right now, I'm gonna regret, show me the.
No, I know, I know exactly what you're talking about. I think that, I think that we pulled one of yours up.
Yeah, right there, you can zoom in with this, with your scroll wheel.
Not with my scroll wheel, but right here.
So that just said, it's a, it's a, uh, thing, we pay, automatically have artists do that. And so it just says welcome to Renzus and people who say, no, take the picture.
Right, and then right up here, the shipping container with Peyton's golf carts has just been put up. They painted a beautiful mural there too. That's directly on their building. Here, really, this should be permitted. I mean, it should have anchors in the ground and everything. That should be a permitted accessory structure. And in that situation. Probably, we will, we're great. We'll get to that at some point.
So can the definition of a sign be something that conveys a message? I mean, if a for commercial purposes? That doesn't convey a message for commercial purposes.
There is a difference between non-commercial and commercial language and you can make that. Delonation in. In ordinance. Now that doesn't get us away from. What do we do about Billy Gaskins and that property? Do we allow something like that or do we not allow something like?
It's hard, because I remember, and I said this in a previous meeting, but. When J C Food and Spaghetti Works was in its old location and it had that giant board with the. Shrimp on it on the sign, that was so cute. I mean, everybody loved that. And then when. That ordinance has changed, I think after, it was more than fifty percent damage, they couldn't. Put it back and it was because everybody was upset about all the. Mermaids at the entrances of stores and all of that, but some of that stuff is, it's really hard to say what is in good taste and what is not in good taste.
Very hard. We let council decide?
Yeah, we just, you can still paint your fence, but it it has a.
I mean, I don't. I don't mind going to council and saying, hey, you know, they, we were divided. We saw the the good sign of. Allowing signs on fences and not allowing signs on fences. So from a enforcement standpoint, we have to think about like the bad actors. So if I'm allowed to have a forty square foot sign. I'm a bar and I'm allowed to have a forty square foot sign, but I want more signage than that. What constitutes a fence? Can I put up one panel? Of forty square feet in front of my property, call it a fence and put a sign on it?
Yeah.
And I mean, so that's where I come at it from.
Yeah, you're right.
From the really bad guys.
I I do have a question too, because in real estate, we sometimes will put a sign on a fence because like a. If, uh, in a commercial setting, because again, the whole thing is fenced in. And you might not really have a way for it to be visible, so you would just. With the owner's permission, like screw the sign on to the fence and the same size that you're allowed to do, but.
So what I can do is I can write it in a couple of different ways and give it to city council. I mean, we've got three city council members here. I can give it to you guys in a way that there's more discussion about that, maybe with more people from the general public at council to have those discussions. Maybe we can invite people like, you know, like Billy to come in and talk about his. Difficulties with signs and that frontage or people that would utilize signs like this. But that we don't have to figure it all out today and we can kind of let that discussion happen, because I think that discussion's gonna happen regardless of what we decide right now.
I think making a recommendation that, you know, we do think it needs to be allowed, but what the. How to allow it.
Okay.
And tying something with that commercial message, I think is important. And tying something with that commercial message, I think is important.
Because all, all the ones over there are Woody's, is that, that those are actually banned, right on?
They're, it's a bunch, so some of them are, some of them are now signs attached directly to the fence, some of them are banners. Some of them are like the signs that Andrew makes attached to the fence, and then some of it's painted.
Okay.
So it's a, a lot.
Is there anything on, in this ordinance that talks about if there's a residential property that runs two streets, like on C Secret and Station Street? Like, sometimes people will put a sign on the fence facing Station Street, and it will just be a normal real estate, like. Or square feet or whatever, and then there will also be one in the front yard, that would be non-compliant, right, because it's.
Correct, because. It does not say that for residential, it says that for commercial, we could write it in the residential.
But it should be.
So that if you're like, or you can have one on each.
But if you have a total square footage, then you should be fine.
If, so you're allowed to have one sign, and then a qualifying event allows you to have that other sign, you can put one on both sides.
And as long as you're.
Well, but if you were doing a real estate sign, which is a temporary.
But again, don't, don't think about real estate signs, just think about a temporary sign. Because we're not allowed to say what they're allowed to.
Be allowed to have one on each street.
Because with that qualifying event of being for sale, you're allowed an additional sign, so you're allowed the one that you're allowed. And then you're allowed the other one for a qualifying event, and so you could put both of those. You would be under the square footed, under the nine foot square foot that we allow.
Yeah. Thinking of all of our illegal signs right now.
Oh.
Now, we have one, Tara, I hope you know his time, basically the new gas station off of, like on the backside of a fence on a house that faces S Bridge.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot.
Big banner that says, house for sale. People from the highway can see it.
And our plan.
Sure, it's more than nine square feet.
So our plan, and I wrote into this ordinance, is to. Make this all start January one of twenty twenty six, so that we've got from October to, to January to get everybody.
Maybe, maybe instead of just think there, how about we just say, no, no signs, no banners, or whatever on a fence, but paint is free.
Because then what about the big properties on three, six, to one, are you allowing them to paint stuff?
I mean, so I guess my question for you is, is paint ugly, or would you rather see redwood?
How about I give city council lots of options, and we discuss it.
Again, it's very subjective, like that turtle mural all the way across the entire Pioneer RB, I don't think anyone would have a problem with that, but if.
But we can't say that it has to be a beautiful turtle mural.
Yeah.
But I love the flip side, is if you say that you can't paint it, you're gonna end up with just nothing but dull weathered wood that's gonna rot after five years.
How many people do you think that get out there, have their time, or get out there and paint that?
So right now.
But I, I think, I think. The hypothetical that, you know, like, if the meteor hits, where are we gonna go, you know, if, if we're gonna get. You know, a piece of space junk lands on this building, you know, who's gonna get out of here first, you know, that's like, it's a possibility.
Okay, I'm, what I'm gonna do is give city council lots of options, so that we can have a robust conversation with the general public and city council.
Perfect.
So we'll move on to flags and fabric displays and have a robust conversation here. Okay.
Can I throw out, or you wanna start?
Go for it.
Okay, so I'm on number nineteen twenty one A, I would like to add the words, except for marriage in Texas flag.
You cannot.
Okay, then I have. Because uh one of them says a maximum, like, excuse me, maximum twenty square feet. And um, I would like to ask everybody, they have different body islander, does that flag look too big?
I have not paid attention to that by the time.
Like to know how big it is.
How big is, it's probably, it's pretty huge.
Sixty square feet.
And how high is it?
Um, I'm guessing it's about twenty two feet, well, I don't know, it is, the pole, I think, is at least twenty eight feet.
So, what if we change that to be?
Over a certain height?
No, I, I, I don't wanna get into that, because we can't measure heights, or we can't enforce that well.
I mean, height doesn't really matter, if I have to blow at the flag six inches to get compliant, if no one says no, but the fact is, if I put a. A uh twenty square foot.
So current, current, currently, you're.
Small.
Because currently, you're not allowed.
That's correct, that's why I'm here today discussing this.
So, I don't, I'm not opposed.
But this is up to three flags on permanent poles, each flag does not exceed twenty square feet, what if? Well.
You said for a total of sixty foot.
But, yeah.
Now, here's the thing, and here's.
But then they're, they end up.
You throw out is.
So what we can say is. With a non-commercial message.
Well, say, I was gonna say this, I was throwing out this, and it doesn't do it now, because it's not here, but Claude used to go park his crane at the softball field. And drop a hundred square foot flag, or bigger than that, and I thought that was really, really cool.
And they do it for special events, and I think that we could probably allow it for a special event kind of situation, but that doesn't help you. So, I mean, what do you guys think, up to sixty square foot for flags, and you can split it up however you want?
That, that sounds good to me.
Well, it says permanent, on, yeah, it does say permanent pole in the language.
But that doesn't make, I mean, yeah, that takes away the ability to put your logo or your brand or something.
I don't mean say twenty square foot.
Commercial.
Except for, for up to sixty foot with the non-commercial message, twenty, twenty square foot with commercial message, and up to sixty foot with non-commercial.
But the, the thing is, is do we want people, do we want somebody to drive down Alister and see ten of those?
I think that would be very chaotic, I don't have a problem with any Port Texas flag.
But, that size, that size.
Dictate.
Right, but I mean.
Or that one house on a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Over by the.
So.
Or a smiley face sign, or.
Baseball field on the other side of the RV.
So I, I agree with you, I think that would look great, but I don't, I don't think that size is, is appropriate for. I didn't look into.
Non-commercial message, yep.
Specifically Texas American flags, if there's any workaround to not saying that specifically, but writing something that gets you that solution.
Yeah.
So, for now, why don't I change it to sixty square foot, divide it up to. A maximum of three sign, of three flags.
Sure, total.
Total.
To sixty square foot aggregate, sixty square foot aggregate, up to three sign.
Up to three flags. And then I will, between now and council, I'll look into if any city has written anything different for American and Texas flags, or Venus.
Temporary, like what about the rotary flip flags?
Argument that that was. I mean, I think that the word permanent is probably misleading there, because I could permanently, I mean, the. Flag that I have in my yard is not really permanent, I take it up and down.
Well, yes, that one's not permanent there, cause after, basically, it's, it's three months or till it gets exceedingly ratty, it gets replaced.
It's on a permit pole.
Yeah.
But it's on permanent pole.
Yeah, that's what matters.
But that's because we are, we, we, you try to keep it classy.
Yeah. Okay, um. Just basically says all the same things, can't be tired or torn, blah, 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 so prohibited.
Okay, yay, I wanna go back to uh B one.
So I do wanna point out that we have far exceeded the length of the conversation that I thought we were gonna.
I'm gonna finish this and I have to go, so I'm gonna just be real quick here, um, I don't remember the sense of, of prohibiting. Feather flag, if I was limited to three to uh property.
Right now, you're limited to six per property, we were probably pretty dead evenly split on.
It was at least, I don't, it was, I think it was over fifty percent, so.
Yeah, it was on eighty percent that we wanted to.
Yeah, again, that can be, if people really wanna come out in support of those kind of flags, I think they should at the city council. Meetings, um, and then that, you know, that is ultimately a city council policy decision, I wrote it in based on what I was hearing at those meetings.
The other option was like, you know, for.
Taken in, yeah, taken in and out every night, one per whatever street frontage you've got.
I know I wouldn't hear a lot, sure, I would have a question about temporary ones those too, cause like for YDF, we put them up at all of our events, we have. Feather flags that say youth development foundation, a quartering system, they put them.
What kind of events?
Like the beach dash, it's our water station and our turnaround, so that the people look.
Do you have, uh, you get some kind of permitting or approval from somebody to do those things?
We don't have that permanently start, finish at the pier.
But do you get permission from the county, and again, the county, we don't regulate, so if you do it on county beach, we have no regulation over that.
Station is in the city quarter.
So how difficult would it be for you to give the city a plan of where you're gonna put those signs and when?
It would be difficult.
I wrote in an exemption in here for special events.
Or feather flags.
For any, any kind of flags, any kind of additional temporary flag allowances for things like Sandfest, because they use those same things. Uh, for things like the Wolfing Crane Festival, I think we could probably just kind of rope you guys into that, and. It just turns into a process where you do have to get a permit from the city to allow those additional flag uses, but I think that that's unfair.
Yeah, for temporary thing.
What about, yeah, so would that count for, say, a real estate agent having an open house with a, so that's prohibited?
It says prohibited, I, I think what's gonna happen is.
It's.
That seems a little.
Well, right now, it's, right now, it's prohibited, and they shouldn't be doing it, because that was only a commercial.
Yeah, it'll be prohibited and forced.
Prohibited with the caveat of now it will be enforced.
And if you're really passionate, you're gonna have to fill out some paperwork and do.
I know, I'm just saying, what about those little inflatable?
Already not allowed.
I see those all the time.
Already not allowed, so the bottom of this, um, I did not want to do any harm to existing businesses, specifically Flyet. So that C section is the, what I'm calling the Flyet exception. That allows them to have those units outside, because those are the units they sell.
Yeah, where did the? Brought it up, this, the couple of the strikes have the, the two T pole, lower cigarette prices now, where, where.
With the banners.
Oh, that was, that, we were, that was a band.
So, it would not be allowed anymore based on how this ordinance is written under B two. Inflatable signs, streamers, banners, or fabric displays attached to ground state. I, I think that that needs to expand and be on ground stakes and go to more and more, just a prohibition in general.
Is the meeting where you're presenting this?
City council at the next meeting is what they asked, the seventeenth of July?
Should we try and have one more meeting?
Do you guys wanna just try to have one more? Okay. Sorry, I thought we could get through it. Yes, everybody chats a lot.
Try not to come to the next one.
So, do you guys wanna just set up a different time that we can do it?
Yeah.
Okay, I am out of the office all next week, except for Tuesday, uh, because we've got council goals workshop, but I am free. So the seventh to the eleventh would be appropriate?
Yes, sometimes I can give you enough.
That is gonna give me plenty of time to make the changes that we need to change, as long as it happens between the seventh and eleventh.
Actually, let me know.
We can just decide right now, what do you guys think?
The tenth.
Okay, tenth.
The tenth, at three o'clock?
Yeah, that worked perfect, yeah.
Uh, that is July, the tenth. Let me make sure I don't have anything crazy there, I do not.
Thursday.
I will send everybody a message, it will give everybody that's not here the opportunity to come here. So we will pick it up af- is everybody okay with the Flyet exception?
Yes.
Yes, we'll pick it up after that, and I think that that meeting will go much quicker, send me anything that you guys want to have me look up, have me think about more. Have me write anything additional for.
No other items for consideration?
Nope.
Okay, we'll adjourn at.
Four forty four.
I pulled it.
Perfect. There you go.